...by police for the listening public. An electronic copy of the budget book and all presentations can be found under the proposed FY26 budget tab on the Finance Exec page of the City Council website. The completion of each topic, CMs will be able to ask questions. And with that, I will ask CFO Balla to take it away. Good morning.
Councilmember Shuck, thank you very much. You give us just one or two minutes for the COO, who will be joining us to get here?
That's fine.
Sure. Thank you. We'll get started in a couple of minutes.
Budget book. Mr. Winston and Mr. Amos have also joined us. We are awaiting the arrival of the COO.
Yeah, I know. Boy, thank you.
So, law doesn't have to be here for budget?
Is that him?
Yeah, I don't see it.
Mr. Wes Moreland has joined us.
Aim for the donuts.
Yeah.
There is.
That's all.
We got your title.
We have them.
The mayor's office.
That's right.
So, you wait for somebody for them.
Yeah.
Something Central Brooklyn used.
Yeah, he was.
She's supposed to be here.
Oh, you saw.
See right there.
I bet you not.
In Oberg.
One people got a 5% budget?
Tell her, yeah.
Just down track.
He pulled a wait list. You may go.
It was waiting.
Department, they got a call.
So, I didn't know that was waiting. I'm not even.
Well, we got Mr. Corrin sitting right there.
Should have been worse.
No, he was honestly.
He goes hard.
That's Ballin right there.
Yeah.
That's me.
That is our last one.
Keep talking.
Hello? Okay. Thank you. Good morning, Council President, Chairman Shuck, and members of council. Mohamed Ballam, the Chief Financial Officer of the City of Atlanta. And today we'll be presenting the fiscal condition of the city. Outlines the framework on the proposed FY26 budget. You should have received copies of the mayor's budget proposal. And we'll follow that with detailed departmental briefings throughout the month. I'd like to thank COO Burks, Chairman Shuck, Deputy Carr, Chief Davis and the Revenue Team, Chief Gabriel, the entire budget team for their contributions. This presentation reflects really our overall efforts between the Department of Finance, the COO's office, to provide a clear overview over the city's fiscal outlook as we present FY2026. Slide. Can someone put up the presentation? Agenda. Okay. So, on today's agenda, we'll walk through the overall financial outlook, some key economic trends as we approach the forecasting and budgeting sections, and then major considerations for the upcoming year. Our goal is really to ensure that you have a transparent and comprehensive view of the city's financial landscape. Next slide. Next slide. Thank you. All right. The guiding principles for the FY26 budget is really grounded on strong financial stewardship, operating efficiency, and a commitment to equity. We are prioritizing structural financial balance and maintaining service levels while preserving flexibility to respond to challenging economic conditions. As many of you are aware, despite the modest shortfall in the general funds FY25 projections, the city's overall $3 billion budget remains stable and well managed. For FY26, we are navigating broader macroeconomic pressures and adjusting operations to enhance efficiency without compromising service delivery. We remain committed to building a resilient and equitable future for all Atlantans. Next slide, please. The slide over you highlights the year-over-year operating budget. As you can see, the FY26 operating budget of $3 billion is a modest increase over the FY25's budget of $2.75 billion. The slide shows the operating budget by fund with general aviation and watershed being the largest. The growth is necessary to support the core operations while maintaining financial flexibility. This slide here is really, I wanted to highlight and segment the city's net financial position across governmental and business activities remains strong. This reflects our consistent and responsible management of the enterprise funds, including aviation and watershed. One area I'd really like to highlight is the governmental activities in that position, which increased from a negative $622 million in 2020 to a positive $571 million. These are all the governmental activities, including the general fund, TAD, bond funds, things that we do on behalf of Atlanta's residents. The slide before you shows the historical general fund expenditures. And this is important to know because they have grown in line with the service demands and the workforce investments that we have made as a government. While the FY26 budget is higher than the '25 budget, it actually reflects a slight decrease over the '25 projections now projected close to $990 million. So, we continue to monitor trends closely and align spending with sustainable revenue levels. Next slide. There is, wanted to talk a little bit about the economic climate we are facing in FY2026. There's a growing national concern around the possibility of a recession in 2025, which is our fiscal year 2026, due to factors like rising tariffs and slowing growth. Polly Market estimates a 56% chance of recession. The Atlanta Fed GDP Now model, that you can see on the bottom there, has shown a sharp drop in April. So, we've adapted with a cautious budgeting approach that reflects that risk. Next slide. In terms of consumer confidence and inflation expectations, consumer sentiment has declined in response to inflation and trade policy uncertainty. These trends could delay interest rate cuts and further suppress economic activities, which we are factoring in our fiscal planning. Next slide. The tariff impacts on employment and income are significant. Tariffs are projected to reduce employment and GDP growth nationally, while most impacts to households, with most of the cost impacting households and industries. One area to highlight in the map that you see there is while Georgia's trade with Mexico, Canada, and China is significant, it's not as critical as other states. leader in education, innovation, and entrepreneurship. We benefit from strong university networks, diverse job markets, and rapid talent growth. Atlanta's one of the fastest-growing and most-diverse cities in the nation. We continue to attract businesses and residents, which supports our long-term fiscal stability. Next slide is for terms of workforce and innovation. Our city is home to a highly skilled workforce, particularly in tech and biomedical sectors. This talent pipeline is a key driver to our economic growth and local revenue strength. So, while we are heading into a recessionary environment, Atlanta does have some strength in its underpinnings that will help it fare better than most other cities in the country. Next slide, please. One of the big drivers for FY26 is the FIFA World Cup. So, hosting the FIFA events will generate approximately $4.1 million in FY26, with additional revenues in FY25 and FY27. So, while conservatively estimated, this is a welcome economic boost that supports one-time revenue enhancements. Next slide. No. Thank you. Yeah, that one. And to just close out this section of the presentation, the fiscal impact considerations, we expect revenue growth to continue, particularly in property and sales tax. So, thank you all councilmembers yesterday for your legislation and passing the first step into the defeesence legislation, which will allow us to recalibrate our tax table and take some of those savings from the bond mill to the general fund that will help support our continuing efforts in FY26. So, but even with the upward revenue pressure, upward revenue estimates, we are expecting some cost pressures from personnel, utilities, and inflation as well. External uncertainties, such as the federal policies, continue to be a big concern for FY26, and we will remain vigilant in how we approach FY26. I will now turn it over to Ms. Carr to go over the forecasting approach.
Thank you, CFO Balla. CFO Balla talked about how we are looking on the national level and local level. I wanted to dive into the state level. So, right now, we look at information from the experts to figure out how we are faring for the state of Georgia. And so, what we're finding, based on Dr. Humphries from the University of Georgia, we are looking at a mild economic slowdown. With that being the case, we know that Atlanta, we're positioned, as well as the state, to fare that slowdown if that happens. There are a number of factors that are out there. We have a diverse industry. We have an IT industry, service industry. We have hospitals. We also have universities. CFO Balla talked about some of the universities that we have here that are really large. We have Morehouse School of Medicine. We have Morehouse. We have Spelman College. We have Emory. We have Georgia Tech. We have Georgia State, on and on. So, we do have a lot, so that if something were to happen, we would be in a really good position. In addition to that, we have Fortune 500 companies. We have Delta Airlines. We have Home Depot. We have NCR. Those are just some of the Fortune 500 companies that are based here in Atlanta. So, we're in a really good position as far as the industry and having things that are very diverse in nature. So, the population for the state of Georgia, so with the population, we're growing two times as fast in the U.S. And again, this is due to the universities and the students that we have coming here. So, what we've noticed is when students come here to go to college, they stay here. I don't know if it's our nightlife. I don't know what it is, but it's really attractive for students to remain here and then also for employers to stay here to capture that talent before they leave. So, we really feel that we're in a really good position. In addition to that, the unemployment rate is about 4%. That's pretty low when you look at the unemployment rate, so we think that this is a good factor for the state of Georgia as well. Next slide, please. According to ARC, the Atlanta Regional Commission, we're adding about 61,000 people per year or 5,000 every month between now and 2050. What that means is, is for our workers, we're looking at around 28,500 workers every year or about 2,300 every month between now and 2050. We are also seeing the increase in the population for Atlanta. We're seeing that individuals are moving from the suburbs all into the inner cities. And so, for different reasons, it could be for traffic. Also, it could be the fact that there's a renewed interest in living, urban living, as opposed to living in the suburbs. So, we wanted to share that. Next slide, please. The next slide, we wanted to talk about the income and the employment for Atlanta. So, what we've noticed is we have personal income that is growing, that is growing by 5.5% from year to year. We also have the federal, local, and state. We have jobs that are about 11% unemployment. For the state, it's about 14%. As I mentioned on the previous slide, we have a diverse industry where we have different sectors, so we're just not tied to federal jobs here in Atlanta, which is a really good thing. Now, I'll move on to the next slide, talking about the downsides and the risks. So, although we think that we're in a really good position, we still have to look at factors that may impact our local government. Some of the things that we need to look at, reductions in the federal workforce. We know that the CDC, the workers have been impacted as far as the jobs, and there may be more to come. In addition to that, we have significant reductions in research and development that could impact Georgia Tech, because Georgia Tech is huge for research and development. And then, the CFO talking about the terrorists. So, really, there's a lot of uncertainty regarding the terrorists, but that is something that we need to consider. All in all, even though we're in a really good position, these are things that we have to continue to look at, because whatever happens on a federal, national level, and a state level, it eventually triggers down to the local economy and the city of Atlanta. So, we just wanted to share that at a high level. And I'll pause here and turn it over to COO Burks to talk about the operating budget development.
Good morning, Mr. President, Mr. Chair, other members of City Council who are here with us today. Again, Lachandra Burks, I serve as the Chief Operating Officer for the City of Atlanta. And I will walk us through, I'm not sure what happened to the presentation, but I'll walk us through the operating budget development. There we go. Thank you. So, in FY25, the year, the budget year that we're currently in, we had a lot of highlights, a lot of things to celebrate. But what we also realized is, as we got a little bit further into FY25, we needed to make some very tough adjustments in order to end FY25 on a decent note, as well as to go into our FY26 budget in a decent space. So, every department, we worked very, very hard. I want to thank the Department of Finance, and I want to thank all of our commissioners and department heads for answering the call. We worked very hard. Everyone had to take a minimum of a 5% cut in order, in this fiscal year, not even talking about FY26. But to end this fiscal year, everyone was required to take a minimum of 5% cut. We worked with each department on that. We re-implemented, as many of you may remember from years ago, the vacancy review board, as we wanted to make sure we were controlling hiring and impact to control our spending. We know that our personnel make up the majority of our, overwhelming majority of our budget, so we thought it was important to push some measures in place around that. We looked at overtime. We thought we were, could manage our overtime just a little bit better. And so, we put some processes and approvals in place in order to make overtime a little bit better and to manage that. And then, we did a return to work. So, for everyone who was not in the office, it brings a little bit more accountability for managers. So, those who are not in the office, a minimum of three days, we made adjustments and gave everyone a little bit more than a month's notice for a return to work for a minimum of three days a week. Just a reminder of the administration's priorities, you've heard, these have been the same since Mayor Dickens has been in office. Our four pillars are looking at one safe city, and that doesn't only encompass public safety, it encompasses everything that makes this city safe. A city that's an opportunity for all, a city that is built for the future, an effective and ethical government. So, those four pillars have remained the same. A little bit about FY26 budget development objectives for the administration. One of the things you will see in the proposed budget is employee compensation benefits and premium pay. We made a commitment when we did the compensation and classification study that we would implement it over the two years. This budget, starting in January of 2027, January of 2027, will complete that Phase Two of the compensation and classification study. We have looked at key investments in infrastructure, public safety, and city service delivery. Key investments in our personnel to attack and retain top talent. And I can tell you, that one has probably performed better than we thought. Just as an example, in public safety, the attrition rate has decreased, and a lot of this is how you all have supported, be it premium pay, be it the class and compensation study, adjustments of salaries, all the things, and the pension reform, all the things that you all have supported that we have put in place. We're beginning to see, one, more people interested in working for Atlanta, and, two, fewer people leaving from working for Atlanta. So, it has had a double edge on us that has worked, and that's what it was intended to do. Strategic partnerships to support year of the youth. You've heard the mayor say, you know, "We started out, we're going to try year of the youth." We have seen increases in Atlanta public schools' graduation rates, as well as we've seen decreases in our youth crimes, as we have continuing to make every year the year of the youth. Targeting investments to capitalize affordable housing and economic mobility. We've talked about that. We all know the affordable housing goals that we have in the city. We're over halfway there to meet the 20,000 target, and so, that continues to remain one of our objectives. Moving down a little bit, diversion services from our support of the Center for Divergent Services that opened in January of this year. We're beginning to see great progress there in what that means for diversion in Atlanta. As the CFO mentioned, World Cup, World Cup is coming, and we need to be prepared for that. So, in order for us to benefit from all of the potential revenue and economic impact that we could see in this city, this metro area, and this state, being ready for World Cup is a priority for us. We've talked about year of youth investments as well as affordable housing, technology and innovation. You will see that in this budget, infrastructure improvements, as well as homeless opportunity initiatives. So, this slide is, the slide is we look at our expense breakout by function. This is one that we have spent a lot of time with in cabinet meetings, with the mayor and senior team meetings, just really making sure everyone understands what this budget really means from an operational perspective. And I'll use public safety as an example, because a lot of people, what you're seeing in this budget, you're seeing some departments with increases. Well, those increases are really right sizing, and I'm hoping that this chart will help present that as to where it is. And I'll look at public safety first. So, in FY24, our actuals ended at $438 million. FY25, we were funded, what was approved in our budget, was $407 million. But what we saw in FY25 in our quarter-two projections, based on where we are, we're thinking that public safety may land at $480. And so, we have made those adjustments to go from that funded $407 to the projected $480. But in this proposed budget, what you're seeing for public safety is right at $473 million. And so, I hope everyone will be able to get a better understanding from this chart to be able to see that while it looks like we're making huge increases in some departments or increases at all, it really is us going to the point of right sizing where departments are projected to spend in FY25. And let me tell you, these projections include their 5% cuts that they were required to work on. And so, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page as it relates to this. I think the good thing is, the challenge that we have given everyone, you will not see a reduction in service, even though they may have some small cuts by departments. But again, this is right sizing where we think the departments are landing this year with a small cut for FY26. And with that, I will turn it over to Chief Davis to talk about our revenues.
Thank you. Lawrence Davis Jr., Revenue Chief for the Office of Revenue. I will now go through the revenue slides, and starting with the first slide that you will see. This slide right here pretty much just outlines the different agencies, businesses, as well as companies that we have utilized in helping us prepare for the anticipated revenue for FY26, as well as the five-year forecast plan. Go to the next slide. This slide before you illustrates our four core revenue categories that contributes to the revenue assumption incorporated into the FY26 budget. Starting with our largest revenue contributor to the proposed FY26 budget at 40% is property tax, which has significant, which has shown significant growth over the last three fiscal years. And compared to other major U.S. cities, Atlanta is outperforming in the housing market. Overall, the information that we have received from our vendors that have assisted us, we showed that in FY26, that the Atlanta housing market will experience moderate growth influenced by factors such as population increase, infrastructure development, and a strong demand for housing. Our next core contributor is local option sales tax, which will make up 16% of the proposed FY26 budget. This revenue category will continue to have growth over the next fiscal year, primarily because of inflation, which you know is driving up the cost of supplies, goods, and services.
Thank you. Lawrence Davis Jr., Revenue Chief for the Office of Revenue. I will now go through the revenue slides, and starting with the first slide that you will see. This slide right here pretty much just outlines the different agencies, businesses, as well as companies that we have utilized in helping us prepare for the anticipated revenue for FY26, as well as the five-year forecast plan. Go to the next slide. This slide before you illustrates our four core revenue categories that contributes to the revenue assumption incorporated into the FY26 budget. Starting with our largest revenue contributor to the proposed FY26 budget at 40% is property tax, which has significant, which has shown significant growth over the last three fiscal years. And compared to other major U.S. cities, Atlanta is outperforming in the housing market. Overall, the information that we have received from our vendors that have assisted us, we showed that in FY26, that the Atlanta housing market will experience moderate growth influenced by factors such as population increase, infrastructure development, and a strong demand for housing. Our next core contributor is local option sales tax, which will make up 16% of the proposed FY26 budget. This revenue category will continue to have growth over the next fiscal year, primarily because of inflation, which you know is driving up the cost of supplies, goods, and services, and our conservative projection of revenue from the FIFA Club and the World Cup Games. Our third core contributor on this slide that we're proposing for the FY26 budget at 15% is public utilities, alcoholic beverage, and other taxes. We are anticipating a significant increase in this line items of utility franchise taxes, insurance premiums, and alcohol by the drink tax, which will be associated with the major sporting games that we will have in our horizon. And our final core contributor on this slide is license and permits, which will be 14% of the proposed budget. And we expect this category to show a meaningful gain in upcoming fiscal year due to our enhanced collection efforts and our new processing system called ATL Biz, as well as our continuous seeing business development growth across the city. Altogether, these four core revenue categories account for 85% of the total proposed FY26 budget. Next slide. This slide here before you is our taxable property values. I will start, and as you see, there's four components, but I will start with the upper left corner of the slide, which is the taxable assessed values. And this just basically depicts the last five fiscal years of the taxable assessed value growth, which is assessed at 40% of the market value to, for tax purposes. The property value over this period has grown steady from $35 billion in 2021 to $47.8 billion in 2025. And as you can see, there's a breakdown on the chart, and they are broken down into residential, commercial, and others. And just for your knowledge, others is comprised of historical properties, mobile homes, mobile vehicles, and public utility property taxes. Moving to the second slide, the second component, sorry, up here was this actual tax collected. This shows the increase in taxes collected from fiscal year 2021 through March of '25. And this coincides with the increase in the property values that we are seeing throughout the last five years. Do note that this number here that you see is for current year only from Fulton County and DeKalb County. Moving over to the right corner of the slide, you, this title, tax base by land use. The pie chart before you is still, shows that the bulk of our tax base is derived from the residential at 54.4% and commercial at 40%, together making 94.4% of the land use, followed by the second highest, which is others at 3.4% and industrial at 2.2%. For, again, just to give you knowledge, industrial properties are tailored for specific owners' use, catering to manufacturing, distributions, research and development, as well as industrial operations such as steel or timber mills. This diversity in the tax base ensures stability and helps buffer against economic downturns in many single sectors. And our final component on this slide is operating millage rate. This just simply shows you the history of the general operating tax levy, which you will see from fiscal year 2021 through 2025. I will point out that in 2021 through '22, the millage rate was at 7.85 mills. And then in 2023, the millage rate did increase by 0.67 mills, and this was to fund the general solidway services. And we have maintained that rate all the way up to 2025. Next slide. Okay, on this slide, this is just basically showing you the historical growth in assessed property values from 2015 all the way to 2025. And this is from both Fulton and DeKalb County. We are projecting right now for 2025 that we will come in at 321.5 million. Again, this is just for current year. As you can see, this healthy performance of the property values and collection has enabled the city to endure the pandemic and changing economic conditions. Next slide. On this slide, if you can see it, this slide here is basically the revenue comparison by category. And we have broken that into the various categories that are listed above. But I do want to draw your attention to the FY24 actuals and other revenues. Right under there, you will see that we have separated for visual purposes a category that we put up for non-recurring revenues, which came in at 67.56 mills. And this is from FY24. Typically, that number, and you will also see that again for the projected year end of FY25 at 47.26 million. Typically, this is rolled up into other revenues, but we just broke it out for visual purposes for you. And just for your knowledge, that other revenue category basically derives from the sales of assets, investment earnings, and miscellaneous revenues. And so now I will just briefly go over to the FY25 year-end projection and just highlight that for you. The city's total general fund year-end revenue projection is around $997 million. This does roughly include $35.5 million from the intra-fund transfers and $224,000 from the operating transfers of Fund 3503. Excluding these transactions, the general fund operation revenue is roughly at $961 million. Now, moving over to the category that is labeled proposed FY26 versus adopted FY25, you will see that we are anticipating increase in nine revenue categories and estimating a slight decrease in two of our revenue categories. I will just highlight a few for the sake of time. Property tax, and in this category, we are anticipating an increase of $72.97 million. And this is due to continuous growth in property value that's driven by a robust housing market and a proposed operating levy increase. As well as this number, once again, does include current and prior year taxes. Moving to the public utilities, alcoholic beverage, and other taxes, you will see that we are increasing this by $11.42 million. And this is basically due to the impact of the FIFA Club, World Cup Games, as well as insurance premium, and the utility franchise fees. The local option sales tax, we will see an increase of 5.83 mills, and this coincides with the impact of inflation on consumers, our approved distribution percentage of our loss provision agreement, and our estimated revenue generated from the FIFA Club, as well as the World Cup Games. And then there is the license and permits category that we are seeing an increase of $7.14 million. And this is based on our new robust system that we are, will have in September of this year, as well as our enhancements in collections and operational procedures. As I stated earlier, the remaining categories will have an increase. However, there are two areas that we are going to see a slight decrease, and that is with the billing, rental, and concession. We are projecting a minor decrease of 15, of 51,000. And this is just basically due to us seeing a reduction in the Fulton County inmate housing at the Atlanta Detention Center. And the other area is the pilot and franchise fees, where we are seeing a slight decrease of 11,000 in revenues. And this is from the line item of water share pilot and franchise fees line item. On the next slide, this is just giving you a visual of the proposed proposal that represents a modest decrease driven by, of the millage rate, a moderate decrease of the millage rate that was driven by the ordinance that was passed on yesterday associated with the bonds. And next slide. And then the slide before you here is just basically illustrating the trend in actuals and one-time slash non-recurring revenues. And as you can see, from FY20 to FY26, the total revenues have grown by 43%. Basically, in conclusion, the anticipated growth across our major revenue categories is a testimony to our proactive planning and commitment to fiscal responsibility as we move Atlanta forward. I will now turn it over to Budget Chief Gabriel, who will provide an in-depth overview of the expenditures.
Good morning. Make sure you can hear me. Good morning. Good morning, President Shipman, Chairman Shook, council members. Pleasure to be here. We will now take a look at the operating budget from the expense side. So the first slide before you provides a snapshot of the city's proposed FY26 operating budget, which totals $3 billion, the largest in our history. It represents an 8% increase over our FY25 operating budget of $2.75 billion. The pie chart really illustrates the distribution of the operating budget across what we have here, our four major fund segments. As a point of reference, these funds are highlighted on Page 63 in your proposed budget books. The general fund is the city's primary operating fund. It's proposed at $975.4 million, accounting for 32.7% of the total budget. Now, within the general fund, 49% is allocated to public safety, 38% to all other operating departments and independent agencies, and 14% is dedicated to non-departmental. Enterprise funds, which operate independently through user charges and fees, comprise a significant portion of our total operating budget. The water and wastewater fund proposed at $733.1 million, and the aviation fund at $835 million. Combined, they account for about 53% of the total operating budget. The remaining seven operating funds are grouped under what we have considered other funds, totaling $441.6 million, representing 14.7% of the overall budget. Next slide, please. This next slide presents a year-over-year comparison of expenditures by major category, showing both the prior year's budget and the FY26 proposed budget of $975.4 million. Now, also included is the FY25 year-end projection, shared during our second quarter financial presentation at FEC. The year-end projection is noteworthy, as it underscores efforts to right-size operations with current spending levels. It presents a more significant variance to FY26 than the FY25 adopted comparison of $121 million as shown in the table. I do want to take a minute just to briefly touch upon a few categories with significant year-over-year variances, beginning with personnel services and employee benefits. The $83.9 million increase is truly a testament of the mayor's commitment and investment in the city's workforce and the ability to right-size personnel to current spending levels. The proposed budget includes the full cost allocation of the class and compensation study that was implemented mid-year FY25. It integrates premium pay into base pay, as well as increases for costs, increases for healthcare. Purchased contract services reflects a year-over-year increase of $21 million. However, I do want to point out that 60% of this amount is attributed to the reclassification of capital outlay expenditures. The costs related to the city's public safety contract for body worn cameras are now recorded as contractual services rather than defined as capital assets. In addition, the variance in this category is driven by rising insurance costs. Other financing uses represents the third-largest year-over-year increase of any general fund category we're highlighting to date. The $13.4 million or 23% increase is primarily attributed to investments in affordable housing, public safety vehicles and equipment, infrastructure upgrades, and municipal facility improvements that we will carry on throughout this fiscal year and the coming years. Next slide, please. This slide presents data from the previous slide as a percentage of budget. I think the main takeaway here is that we're funding at the same level as last year from a percentage standpoint, with personnel costs really representing nearly two-thirds of the general fund operating budget. Next slide, please. This slide provides a departmental breakdown of the FY26 proposed budget. It incorporates the rebaselining of the general fund, which has a greater dollar impact on frontline departments, particularly public safety for police fire and corrections, as well as non-departmental, as highlighted in the table. The right-sizeing of the FY26 budget, which has been alluded to by COO Burks and CFO Balla, definitely aligns with the efficiency measures that were introduced earlier this year and also indicated by COO Burks. Memos were sent out to all commissioners and department heads requesting reductions in expenditures of the 5%, limiting discretionary spending and compliance with the relaunch vacancy review board, which now serves as a permanent mechanism to ensure that staffing decisions align with core priorities and essential operational needs. The FY25 year-end projection of $988 million, which is in the middle column, includes reductions, as COO Burks mentioned, from these efficiency measures. Without them, the projection would be significantly higher. Now, looking ahead, the Department of Finance will hold monthly meetings with departments to not only track spending, but also to monitor operational efficiencies. This ongoing engagement is essential to maintain fiscal discipline and stay within the parameters of the FY26 budget. Next slide, please. This final expenditure slide focuses on the general fund's non-departmental budget. As the name implies, non-departmental provides funding for various expenditures that generally are not specific to any one specific single department. The FY26 proposed budget of $135 million is an increase of about $12 million, or 9.9% compared to the FY25 adopted budget of $122 million. This increase is primarily attributed to ongoing investments in affordable housing, facility improvements and infrastructure upgrades, and rising insurance costs. The accompanying pie chart highlights key allocations within non-departmental budget, including debt service, other post-employment benefits, strategic partnerships with Fulton County and DeKalb County, as well as Invest Atlanta. Restricted reserves are budgeted at $4 million, comprising roughly about 3% of non-departmental. Next slide, please. So here, we want to sort of take a look at our five-year look ahead. This first slide offers an executive summary of the general fund forecast, providing a high-level overview of projected revenues and expenditures over the next five years. It reflects our key assumptions around growth and cost escalation for both revenues and expenditures. Overall, as you can see in the graph, the forecast emphasizes the need for us to remain fiscally prudent, given the net impact position for most of the forecast period. I will now turn the presentation over to Chief Davis, who will speak briefly about revenues.
Thank you. In regards to revenues, as you can see at the bottom of this slide, we are projecting a revenue increase from '26 to '30, I mean, yeah, from '26 to '30, from $975.4 million to roughly around $1.1 billion. I will start with just a small highlight of FY27, since we talked about FY26 in this report. In FY27, we are going to see an increase of 3.9%. In FY twenty-seven, we are going to see an increase of two, of three point nine percent, and this is going to be due to the remaining estimated impact of the revenue from the World Cup games, as well as just the standard growth performance of property tax with the proposals that were presented before you. After FY twenty-seven, we are forecasting revenue growth in FY twenty-eight, basically because of the host, of the city hosting the Super Bowl sixty-two. And after FY twenty-eight, we will see all the way to FY thirty that we will have significant increases in our core revenue categories, which will be property tax still leading the way, followed by local option sales tax, public utilities, alcoholic beverage, and others taxes, and the license and permits. Overall, we are seeing that our five-year plan demonstrates a positive outlook for the city's future finances with a steady growth in the revenue category, in our eleven revenue categories. As always, we have taken considerations of the political and economic climate and the development of this five-year proposed, and I will now turn it over to Sean to give his views on the expenditures.
Just want to take a moment to just walk through some of the underlying assumptions driving the expenditures at the major category level, beginning with personnel services and employee benefits. We have assumed a point five percent annual increase in salaries regular and a three percent annual increase in salaries sworn. Should APD maintain its current hiring cadence, we anticipate reaching two thousand officers by twenty-thirty. This gradual growth is reflected in the forecast. We've also assumed a two percent increase in pension plans for DB, fire, police, and defined contributions, and a six percent increase in group healthcare compounded each year. For purchased contract services, a three percent annual escalation is assumed, reflecting rising costs for key contracts and services. In the supplies category, we have accounted for utility cost increases, three percent annually for electricity, and one percent for water consumption, along with rising costs for tactical gear, uniforms, and equipment to support public safety personnel. Capital outlays are expected to remain stable with only minimum purchases of minor capital items over the forecast period. For inter-fund and inter-departmental charges, we've assumed a two point five percent reduction in preventative maintenance due to recent fleet replacements, partially offset by five percent increase in fuel costs and usage. The forecast accounts for continued growth in the city's fleet to support operations including public safety personnel target mentioned previously for the two thousand officers by twenty-thirty. Other costs include modest growth in IGAs in our MOUs and a four percent annual increase in other poison, other post-employment benefits. Debt service is forecasted based on the city's current debt schedules. Our conversion summary line assumes a budgeted reserve of one percent, increasing to one point five percent in FY twenty-nine and two percent in FY thirty. Other financing uses assumes continued investments in affordable housing, infrastructure upgrades, municipal facility improvements, and public safety vehicles and equipment, which will continue throughout the forecast period. At this time, I will turn now the presentation over to Ms. Tiffany Jones-Golden.
Good morning, council members. Tiffany Jones-Golden, serving as the interim comptroller. So we've heard and we've talked a lot this morning about the general fund, and I'm here to highlight some of the other key funding sources that supports the city's operations and special projects and programs. So the first one being impact fees, and the impact fees are charges that are collected from new development projects to help pay for the cost of providing public services to that new development. And they are essential, especially as the city continues to grow, because they help to make sure that we have the right infrastructure in the right places without overburdening the general fund. So on this slide, you can see that the impact fee fund balance as of March twenty-twenty-five is eighty-one point nine million dollars, and the chart shows the fund balance by the various service areas. And then the fund balance for each of the service areas are then broken down by unrestricted, which is shown in blue, and then restricted, which is shown in red. So that unrestricted fund balance, that represents the funds that are available for future eligible projects. And then the restricted, or the red bar, fund balance indicates that those funds have already been committed to specific projects. So you'll notice on the chart that the largest balance is in the transportation citywide category, and that category has thirty-seven point eight million restricted for projects, and then one point four million unrestricted. And the large amount in that transportation citywide project is due to the fact that prior to the most recent impact fee study and updated ordinance, the city only had one transportation service area, which was the citywide. And so that updated ordinance, it established three new transportation service areas, and you can see them on the chart, which they are Transportation North, Transportation West, and Transportation South. And this was done to align the transportation service area with the parks service areas, and then it better reflects where the growth is actually happening in the city. Next slide, please. All right, so another key funding source that we use to help support the city's specific programs is the city's trust fund. And this slide gives an overview of where the trust fund stands as of March twenty-twenty-five. So right now, we have a hundred and ninety-seven individual trusts, and they total sixty-three point nine million dollars. And these trusts allow us to fund longer-term initiatives without putting that extra pressure on the general fund. And while we do have the hundred and ninety-seven trusts, the top ten trusts, which are the ones that are listed on the slide, they represent fifty-seven percent of the total balance. And these support our larger or the legacy efforts like the tree removal protection and the economic development, and then other specialized community programs. And then I also want to point out that there are some trust funds, like the Affordable Housing Trust, where we fund those each year, but they are being spent down. So at the point that this information was compiled, that trust fund did not make it into the top ten. Next slide, please. All right, so this is the audited general fund fund balance, and what this slide shows on the chart is the fund balance and how it has changed from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty-four. And since twenty-fourteen, we've seen an eighty-three million dollar increase in fund balance, and this reflects strong financial management and a focus on building healthy reserves. So on this chart, the blue bar represents the unrestricted fund balance, and this is the portion of fund balance that we are able to use more flexibly. And then the green bar represents the restricted fund balance, and that is set aside for specific purposes. So while there was a twenty-one million dollar decrease in FY twenty-four due to strategic initiatives, it's important to note that that unrestricted fund balance was still at twenty percent of the budgeted expenditures, which is in line with the city's fund balance policy, and it shows that the city's financial position remains stable and well-managed. At this point, I will turn it over to Chief Knight to discuss debt and investments.
Thank you, Tiffany, and good morning, Council President Shipman, Chairman Shook, and members of the council. The Department of Treasury Debt and Investments is responsible for managing the city's debt portfolio on one side and our cash and investments on the other side. This slide here shows you a summary of where we are with respect to our outstanding debt. The pie chart on the left shows that we have seven point five billion dollars of debt. Most of it is comprised with about forty-eight percent for the Department of Aviation, thirty-five percent for the Department of Watershed Management, eight percent for general obligation bonds, seven percent for general fund and other obligations, and two percent for TADS. Over the past year, our outstanding debt has increased by two hundred and nine million dollars. That includes an increase of aviation debt of two hundred and seventy-one million dollars, and paydowns in the Department of Watershed Management of over one hundred and thirty-two million dollars. We also issued a small, what we call baby bond, of four million dollars, which, under state law, were permitted to issue four million dollars per year without a referendum. The watchword in what's been happening in Treasury Debt and Investments is volatility. Over the past year, we've seen rising interest rates, volatility in the bond market, which directs how we treat both our debt portfolio and our investment portfolio. We have not identified any opportunities to save net present value savings in the debt portfolio over the past year, but we do anticipate having an opportunity to refund some Department of Watershed Management bonds in the very near future. Looking at the investment side of the house. Next slide, please. Yeah, thank you. We have just over two point one, two point two billion dollars of cash and investments. Our portfolio objectives continue to be primarily safety, meeting the city's cash and payment liquidity needs, and lastly, investing to earn for increased yields. The investment portfolio consisted primarily of Georgia Fund One, which is administered by the State Treasurer's Office at forty-eight percent. We have just about twenty percent of the portfolio in U.S. Treasury Securities, eighteen percent in U.S. Agency Securities, and we invested a small amount, fourteen percent of the portfolio in other municipal bonds. This two point two billion dollars is a net decrease of nine hundred and thirty-four million dollars from the prior year, reflecting principally the cash optimization transaction we executed for the Department of Watershed Management and increased outlays. The yield that we've been, average yield that we've been able to obtain over this year is four point one percent. We continue to sit, sit still on our cash and investments in light of the volatility that we're seeing in the bond market. The last slide summarizes our ratings. We are, continue to be proud of the first triple-A rating in the city's history by Fitch. We did receive an upgrade of ratings of our airport revenue bonds. Standard and Poor's basically downgraded every airport in the United States with the onset of the pandemic, and they're coming around now with the returns of increased traffic and upgrading us back to the double-A level. We continue to see strong ratings at the Department of Watershed Management, double-A two by Moody's, double-A minus by Standard and Poor's, and double-A by Fitch. That concludes my summary of information regarding the debt and investment portfolio, and I'll turn it back over to CFO Balla to ask, answer any questions y'all may have.
Thank you, Courtney, and thank you, everybody. That concludes our prepared remarks today, and we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you. We were joined some time ago by Ms. Ove Street and Ms. Bakhtiari. If it's all the same, I'll open it up here. I think in order for us to understand twenty-six, we need to understand its direct genetic parent, which is FY twenty-five. And so I would like to hear a little bit more from the finance department in terms of how and why FY twenty-five ended up as it did.
Yeah, so this isn't necessarily unique to FY twenty-five. In the last couple of fiscal years, twenty-three, twenty-four, as well as twenty-five, we have had areas of high revenue growth. Knowing that we've had that high revenue growth, we have invested strategically into operations of the government. This is the first year in FY twenty-five where the revenue growth over the budgeted and projected amount was not as high as the expense outweigh. So seeing that in the beginning half of the year, during the first and second quarter, we made those decisions to kind of slow down the spending pattern so that they can align better with the revenue growth that we've seen historically. Just for some context, if you will, the FY twenty-four budget, which had a seven hundred and ninety million dollar budget that was passed then, also was over nine hundred million dollars in spending, but there was sufficient revenue in FY twenty-four to address the needs of that fiscal year. So we've kind of went into this structural pattern of projecting the revenues based on the city's charter, which states how you can assess the next year's budget. But now we are going into a position where we think it's in the best interest to right-size the budget to the realistic spending patterns that we're going to see in FY twenty-six.
Okay. So just because it may not be completely clear to everybody when the word cuts are mentioned, that's in relation to FY twenty-five actuals?
Correct.
So that's all I have on that right now. As we move through the operating departments, I'll probably continuously be going back to FY twenty-five.
Absolutely.
Just a couple fifty-foot, fifty-thousand-foot observations. You started putting this budget together months and months ago.
Yes.
And in terms of what's keeping us off balance in our, you know, daily news cycles, I mean, we, none of us knows what tomorrow's headline is going to be.
Correct.
The landscape may look completely different.
Correct.
So I have to wonder if you could have put all of this together, just based on the last week's worth of news, I wonder if any of your assumptions would change, because I will tell you, I, I think it's awfully hard to make assumptions with this record uncertainty and turmoil that's out there.
That's a very good and fair question. So when we look at the city's kind of overall delivery, we spend a lot of time on the operating aspects of city government, but there's a big component in city government, which is also capital investments and capital delivery. So we are approaching that aspect of it in a manner of delivering the projects that we've already committed to, not overextending ourselves, not committing to new capital projects. Hence, you know, within, kind of as we developed and we started to see things unwinding, is we made a strategic initiative to recalibrate that tax table and to defees a lot of our outstanding debt to reduce the bonding capacity of the city of Atlanta so that we can focus on that operational delivery. That is first and foremost. The second thing is, we do continue to look back at what happened in previous downturns and cycles, oh-eight, oh-one being one. Those historical events showed that what tends to be impacted the most right away are components like sales tax, hotel motel tax, and things that are driven by consumer spending and consumer habits. We have projected both of those conservatively, but those are areas where we could see additional pressures. If things don't materialize to our projections, we will coordinate fast and effectively with the COO's office to make sure that we can make adjustments where needed without impacting service delivery. One of the biggest components that we've implemented and will continue to implement through FY twenty-six, as we mentioned before, was the vacancy review board. The vacancy review board allows us in real time to have a lever on the city's onboarding and offboarding capacity. It also allows us to right-size what the city's employment profile should look like for a city our size. That is area where we work in tandem to see how we better leverage technology, how we better leverage AI and things that we're, can help us improve absorbing a lot of the attrition and help drive down some of our operational costs, which is primarily personnel-driven at 63%.
So we're growing the police force, yet they continuously get themselves into overtime trouble. Shouldn't their overtime be diminishing instead of increasing?
Great question, Councilmember Shook. And actually, we have seen a huge decrease in overtime with the Atlanta Police Department, and you'll hear a lot more about that during their budget presentation. But with the new Public Safety Training Center opening, the amount of overtime that we were using there has decreased. Chief Sherbaum has been extremely strategic with his command staff on making sure that as we cover large-scale events, that we pay more attention to the overtime usage, seeing how we can shift resources in-house before completely just going to overtime. So you will hear more about that. A lot of the 5% cut that the Police Department was able to do in this fiscal year really was around overtime.
All right, and then last question is, you knew you were going to have to put together a budget that was represented cuts compared to last year's actuals. Are you proposing in this year's budget to eliminate any programs or activities?
We don't see us eliminating any programs and activities. I think also when we talk about, you know, returning to work, having people more in-person, a little bit more accountability, we're able to shift resources where necessary. But you should not see any cuts in services or programs as a result of this budget.
Thank you, Mr. Dozier.
I'm gonna just keep, oh, there we go. All right, thank you, Chairman Shook, and thank you all so much. Just coming back this morning, I know we're spending a lot of quality time in this room. And it's really great for me, and it feels like a throwback to the old days of Atlanta. So it's just kind of cool to be able to do this in this space. Just to allude to something that Chairman Shook had said about some of the assumptions that have gone into the forecasting models that y'all have been using. I feel like since I've been on this body, I've been very deeply concerned about a lot of the macroeconomic challenges facing the country and how that's impacted the City of Atlanta. When I first came on council, inflation was a big issue, and it continues to be, but it was something that I was deeply concerned about with regards to delivering capital projects. Going forward, particularly with this administration, I know you alluded to it in a lot of different places in the presentation, but I still have a lot of concerns about whether or not the storm that we expect, the economic storm that we expect potentially to happen this year or next year, if we're putting enough, if we're as a whole projecting in a way that I think puts our city in a better financial position. As an example, you know, we talk about a lot of construction projects happening across the city. Labor costs, we know, or we feel are going to go much higher than they are now. Immigration crackdowns. Ability to support, to source labor is continuing to be a challenge, while also with the tariff conversation that we're having, commodities, shipments and things like that are driving the cost of construction. I have a deep concern that with a lot of the property tax revenues that we're anticipating, that a lot of the projects that are currently in the pipeline aren't going to be fully reach their potential because of those challenges. And so number one, I just, I'm just curious as far as, to allude to Councilmember Shook's point, what's the worst-case scenario that we plan for? Assuming places that we see cranes today may not be fully built. We have huge projects in my district, Mall West End being one of them, South Downtown redevelopment, Centennial Yards. I just have deep concerns that with the recession potentially looming, that we're not going to get the property tax revenue that we are anticipating. Similarly, a lot of the activities planned around the development of these projects, especially around World Cup, I know even beyond just the tourism we're expecting next year, Metro Atlanta gets about 730,000 international tourists every year. We're down 10% so far because of some of the restrictive policies that this administration has put in, and it is deterring a lot of international travelers. My colleague mentioned this at CDHS last week when ACBB presented before the body. And so from a sales tax revenue, from a just discretionary spending standpoint, I just have deep concerns that that's going to impact our city's bottom line. Just a final point on that. I know home sale values are, I don't know about the values yet, but home sales are going down as well. We've seen a 6% monthly drop in the last two years, the highest in the last two years. I don't know if there's any concern about the appraisal of property values reflecting that, that shift, and whether that is going to impact our city's kind of revenue outlays. There's also, there's a lot of macroeconomic things happening that I just have deep concerns that we're going to be able to weather that storm. So I guess my question in all this is, number one, are we looking at identifying additional revenue streams to be able to better weather the storm of some of the potential challenges that we have with our existing revenue streams? As an example, there's been a lot of conversation amongst this body over the last couple of years about our TADS and whether or not it might be an appropriate time to consider closing some of our TADS, recognizing that our general fund might need some of that additional income. I know we just closed Princeton Lakes, we just closed Atlantic Station. But we also have some major TADS that are out there that could potentially be evaluated for closure depending on what that forecast model looks like in the worst-case scenario. So I guess that's my question. I guess, what are we thinking in all that? Lots to unpack there. Thank you.
It's a lot to unpack, and thank you, Councilmember Dozier. First, I'd like to thank the wise people way before I got here that changed the city's fiscal year from year-end to July 1. What that really does, it kind of gives us a sneak peek into our largest contributor, which is property taxes, because that digest is set at the beginning of the calendar year. So we know that the values are pretty much consistent. The tax bill that's going to go out in FY '26 was already set from January 1, 2025. We're confident with that number in this projection being a solid number. In terms of new revenue sources, we are actually working closely with the administration across the board on enhancing the other revenue categories, which have quite frankly been stagnant for some years. Us here at the Department of Finance, we had a study done, and we'll bring it in front of city council to discuss in more detail with regards to the occupational tax certificates that businesses pay here. Though those fees have not been changed in over decades. And so the application fee and the processing fee is not recovering the full cost to perform those services here internally. So those are areas where we've had some outside work look into, to assess those, as well as our tax tables compared to other municipalities that are servicing city-like functions and what they charge in their local jurisdictions in Georgia. Those are things that we're looking at. We're looking at a slew of other revenue categories, from tipping fees to right-of-way to even, you've seen the enterprise funds of aviation tackle some of their parking fees lately in watershed, and others will be doing the same as well, as well as sideways services, to make sure that at least the fee portion and component is recovering the full cost to deliver those and that the burden isn't shifted to the taxpayers and more aligned with the services that are being provided. CEO, you want to add anything?
No, I think you covered it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then just, I guess, on a similar note, I know at one point a few years ago, we had a robust conversation around working with our county partners to make sure our commercial properties were being appraised at their true value. And I know we did a work session at one point. I don't know if there's been any additional conversations since then.
There have been. We have Robert Moses here who can give an update. Would you like, Robert?
Thank you, Councilmember Dozier, Robert Moses, Intergovernmental Affairs Director, Finance Department. So we engaged a vendor to provide a machine learning tool for us to examine the property appraisals of both Fulton and DeKalb County. We've recently received from results of that, and we'll be providing a report to council shortly. What it shows, though, is that there is a diversity of data, both between residential and commercial, and very much a diversity of data between specific geographic locations in the city. But we'll be providing a report on that to council shortly.
Thank you. Mr. Cherry.
Thank you, Mr. Wong.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. This is a, I always appreciate kind of the high-level overview of the budget as we get started. I will share and echo Mr. Shook's comments. I think I came into this process expecting a more conservative stance on the city, from the city in terms of what we were committing to and in terms of expenditures. You know, I think we may already be in recession. I mean, the first quarter GDP shrank, and I, we won't know until the second quarter. And I, I'm concerned, you talked a lot about the tariff impact, but I think we're also underestimating the reduction of spending that effect and how it affects industry nonprofits that are impacted. And one of our colleagues has been working on that as well. So I, you know, the budget that y'all have landed in our laps is what it is, but just know that I'm going to be coming at it with that lens. I would have preferred that we had been saved some of our powder for the unexpected anticipation of some just contraction. And then also to Councilmember Dozier's comment, and it's something that I've been talking about in terms of our infrastructure expenditures, I think we're maybe underestimating the continued inflationary impacts. So those two combinations make me nervous about where we stand. But as we go through each one of the departments, we will see. I was also expecting, given what y'all are talking about in terms of our austerity measures right now, that we would have a smaller budget because of that as well. So let's, for example, say, as you said, FY '95, FY '25, sorry, budget is kind of, yeah, I'm 70 years ahead, is coming in at 990, right? And so we all talked about a 5% reduction. Well, if you do the straight math, 5% off of 990 is $50 million. But let's even roll that back further and be more conservative and say, well, only 65% of it is salary, so that's the immediate thing we can control. That's still $30 million. And yet, we're only seeing a $15 million reduction. So I just, I'm sure there's a reason for it, but I'm, again, another reason why I'm nervous is we had an opportunity to kind of under-project, and then if things turned our favor, we could then have choices in terms of the investments we could continue, the extra icing investments we can make. So at some point, we'll go through that. I mean, but just know, again, I just, I'm surprised at the 975 number that's landed. Okay.
We'll get to it in more detail. I think we just wanted to kind of reiterate that some of the efficiencies we're seeing in '25 getting us to the 990s, that push down started. So, and when we were running different scenarios with a fully loaded FY '26 picture, it looked a lot different than 975. And so we kind of worked down to that number from different iterations and different scenarios all the way to what if we funded every FTE that we had, down to what if we funded everybody's wish list, right? So those look completely unattainable, and they're numbers that, you know, keep you up at night.
That's fair. I guess, even with that consideration, I wouldn't have expected a factor of two or three that, in my mind, I was expecting. So that's okay. Help me get a little more comfortable in terms of the correlation of a national GDP contraction versus what translates to Georgia and then what it translates to Atlanta historically. Are we
Yeah.
that much more inelastic in terms of the swings?
We tend to have better downside protection than the national climate. One of the main reasons is we benefit from a diversity of industries. We're not a one-industry hub. We're not, for example, a dot-com bubble that had a big impact on areas that were high-tech or financial crisis that had huge significant impacts on New York. Our sectors are diverse, our employee bases are diverse. We are also a growing city and a growing region. So while, you know, there's national pressures that could be coming down, we'll benefit from people saying, well, it's too tough here. Let me go to Atlanta and Georgia and try to figure out there. And that, that kind of helps mitigate some of that risk as well, too. But, you know, there are things that are, that are, you'll see across the board. Things like consumer sentiment and consumer spending and consumer habits, those ones tend to be unilateral, right? If everybody is not spending, sales tax will take a hit. And so when you're talking about a sales tax number of $150 million contributions to our general fund, a 5%, 10% hit is, you know, $15 million, $7.5 million. But that is something that, given our fund balance, given where we stand as a city and our coordination to be able to react a little bit maybe quicker, kind of, I think, I think we're in that proactive stance now to help mitigate some of that should help us considerably.
I think the specific area that I'm anxious about is hospitality. I mean, because that, I mean, at Emory, we are already cutting back on our travel budgets in anticipation, and again, being conservative and cautious. So, and we know we'll get, Atlanta will get hit by that. But you're right, I think, to the extent that there is diversification in our economy, hopefully that'll shield some of it. All right, so that's a perfect jumping point for me to a FIFA comment and question, and then I have one last question after that. So everybody's looking at next year, it's throughout your presentation. I have, and I don't know if this conversation's been had with organizers, with our sports council, but is there a concern about the current international temperature climate, environment that might impact folks' willingness to travel to Atlanta from overseas, because that will be a significant portion of that? What conversations have I had? Because again, I feel like we are, we keep looking to that as a major driver for FY '26 budget. And I think we can't ignore kind of the macro influences that are happening that could impact that negatively as well.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. So we, as a host committee, have been working with, Atlanta is on the host committee with Atlanta Sports Council, Atlanta Convention and Visitors Bureau, Georgia World Congress Center. And so the thing that is hard to tell right now is that FIFA will not do the draws until December. So yes, it is a concern, but we don't know how much of a concern it is until we have the draws in December to see which eight games we will be hosting in Atlanta on, in June, starting in June. So we're continuing to have those conversations. We're continuing to be skeptical. I think even CFO Balla's projections around the revenue that we could obtain is lower than what the chamber has put out. And so I think we've been conservative in that space for that reason, but we'll really have a better idea after the draws in December.
Okay, that's, I'm good to hear that. I guess we'll just watch for December for a number of different reasons. Yeah, I saw the revenue, the anticipated revenue bump from that, that's a break. Have we been able to at least guesstimate what our incremental operating costs are in anticipation of the activities, starting now, obviously? So we haven't quantified that yet.
We are continuing to work on that. We, fortunately, I see hosting FIFA is like hosting eight Super Bowls, right? So the great thing about where we are in our projections is that we have an idea of what it costs to do. So the great thing about where we are in our projections is that we have an idea of what it costs to do one game, so it kind of leads us to what it would cost to do eight games. But we're also looking at it from a perspective of, a lot of people are looking at revenue generation and economic impact as people coming into town a day or two before a game and staying a day or two after. So we're looking at this from a 45-day perspective, even though the games cross over 39 days. And so we've been working from a public safety standpoint to put something together, working with the metro area police departments around possible mutual aid agreements. We expect to have all of that completed within the next month as we look through what we think the anticipated costs are, in addition to, from a public works perspective, around keeping the city clean throughout the city, not just downtown. So maintaining what we're currently doing, plus enhancing a little bit of additional cleanliness that we'll need for having additional visitors.
I'm glad to hear that. Just know that during the department hearings, another thing I'm going to be leaning into is there are other departments that are going to be impacted as well. I mean, transportation, obviously. Planning, there probably will be increased activity around people just trying to get their work done so they can get their houses ready to rent, or whatever. Well, we'll have more in license and permits because there are going to be activities. So just, we, I just want us to make sure that we are anticipating and ready and amping up levels on all our departments, not just the ones that are event-specific.
So we're meeting bi-weekly with all impacted departments, be it, like you said, events, special permits for events, even our Parks Department and what parks will look like, from Public Works to Public Safety, Watershed, in case we have a water main break. So we have a list of departments that will be impacted, planning from short-term rental, implementation and enforcement, you name it. So we are meeting bi-weekly with all impacted departments to make sure that we are keeping track of those things.
And part of that, too, will be making sure we've got all our systems in place so that with the increased activity, I mean, down to just making sure that we're capturing the delta in drink sales so that we're able to capture every bit of revenue that we can from that. All right. My final question is around the property tax increase from FY '25 to '26. It's a big jump at 16% or 17%. There's a number of things that are going into that, but can you articulate that?
Sure. If you go to slide...
Thirty-three?
Yeah. Thirty-two. So if you go to slide 32, one of the biggest contributors that we see is, you see that Atlanta's overall tax bill is actually decreasing from 11.4 to 11.37 year-over-year. What that allows us to do is it allows us to take advantage of the defeesence that we are doing with the... That was passed yesterday by City Council. It allows us to reallocate the need from capital to operating. And that helps us deliver and have that focus on the operating needs of the city over the, you know, next foreseeable future. That is one of the main things. Actually, net savings to homeowners, about $50 per homeowner because the bond mill, the capital mill, that bond mill, is one that is, does not benefit from any exemptions. So that's a huge one.
Okay. So on page 33, then, the bonds reduction they'll rate does not, am I correct? That does not flow through, it flows through a different part of our budget? Okay. So that accounts for part of it. I assume that part of it is...
The other part of it is natural growth in the dig... A little bit of natural growth in digest. So remember, if you have a home... Right. But if you have a homestead exemption under our HB floating exemption, you're only capped at that 2%. If you bought a brand-new home this year, you get assessed at that value, that new value. Commercial properties get assessed at 40% of whatever the value is, and I think that jumped up to 47% mill per digest.
Remind me again, we should see, be seeing Atlantic Station increment coming back, right? And that's a magnitude of five, six million?
Six million. It's baked in here as well.
Okay. Yeah, because again, this one, that one is probably the one that will catch people's eyes in terms of why is it all of a sudden jumping so much? But it's a combination of mileage rate, natural growth, and then some, not one time, but just return of increment back to us. Okay. Mr. Chair Yeo, thank you. Thank you, Mr. CFO and Madam CEO.
Thank you. President Shipman.
Thank you. Good morning. I just want to run through a few specific questions. I'll try to time the slides to make them easier. If we look at page 26, and there are a couple of places, and I'm going to start with FY '25 projections to FY '26. We see decreases. CEO Burks, you talked about this. How much of the $15 million decrease has already been achieved, as opposed to how much are we anticipating to be achieved?
I... It has been achieved. That's where we're working. And the budgets that you will see that's in our proposed budget, this is where we are for FY '26.
So we're confident that by, that by the end of FY '25, we will have achieved a run rate that is equal to the FY '26 budget?
It's a good question. Yes, and, because it still depends on that vacancy review board's ability to drive down attrition. So one of the things that we'll need is we'll need continued cooperation and coordination from each department's personnel hiring patterns going over the next year. So half, beginning of the year, halfway through the year, as we start to benefit from the attrition that naturally happens without backfilling, allowing us to reduce the total headcount halfway through the year, we'll have much better clarity where it happens, I would probably say, by the end of the first quarter. Because remember, the vacancy review board didn't start until the beginning of, I think it was January, February, when we implemented it. This might have been the third or fourth, 20th of January, February. So we had a good full cycle. So halfway through the year, we think that we'll achieve this targeted rate.
Well, just in round numbers, the FY '25 to FY '26 budget shows personnel increase. So what's the FTE decrease roughly between the FY '25 projection that you delivered to council and the FY '26 budget?
It is roughly about, oh, where is it? A hundred and...
A little over 100.
Little over 100. Yes. So it's about 150 FTEs to get from the 630 to the 617. So each FTE at the City of Atlanta, fully loaded with benefits and retirement, is roughly $100,000 or so. That's just on average, but, you know, we are looking and targeting nonessential workers. So this targeted effort of absorbing attrition and kind of recalibrating and restructuring departments is with minimal impact to service and frontline delivery. It's more on the, quite frankly, the management level and up and administrative staff. That is where we're pushing real hard against backfills and allowing departments to have a very strong justification why that job needs to come back in government and can't be absorbed in other places.
And just to go back to my first question, if you're targeting 150 FTEs, how many have already been achieved to this point, and how many are yet to be achieved as attrition happens and they don't backfill? Again, rough numbers. I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get an understanding.
Roughly about 50, and about 50 more to go, I would say.
We've got 50 so far.
50 to 75.
Yeah, again, round numbers. 50 to 75. And so we've got another 50, we've got another 75 to 100 to go over the course of the next couple of quarters. Okay. If we go to page 49, one more kind of FY '25 question. Oh, sorry, two FY '29 questions. Page 49, what do we think the FY '25 fund balance is going to be? Both restricted and general fund?
You were making me touch the third rail. I understand. We really, we really don't like giving fund balance projections for... We only show the audited fund balance numbers at year-end. That is for a host of other reasons. I don't know if I can... Audit reasons, investor reasons, other things. It's a number that we, you know, are working kind of very hard to maintain. I will say this, the city's charter does have a fund balance target of 15% to 20%. And it is our full intent to make sure that we are well within our targeted fund balance numbers of 15% to 20% of budget.
Is there downward pressure or upward pressure, given all the...
It's definitely downward pressure.
Okay. So we would not expect it to be a huge positive number this year?
No, no.
To page 32, one more FY '25 question. If you look at FY '25 year-end projections, this was touched on, but I just want to get specific. Can you break down a little further what the nonrecurring revenues, and specifically what were the... How much of that were asset sales for FY '25 projected? And what exactly was the intra-fund transfer for FY '25?
So in FY '26...
No, no, FY '25.
FY '25, okay. Yeah, FY '25, the intra-fund transfer, it was the mid-year budget adjustment and the, the ability to use fund balance to bridges through halfway through the year. So that was allowed by the body. The 47 does not include any asset sales as a net number. That number is purely one-time, nonrecurring revenues.
Okay. So let's go to a couple of questions on going forward. Page 40, it is just touched on here that included in other financing uses are Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I did not see a number for that in this budget. What's the proposed?
The proposed, yeah. The proposed Affordable Housing Trust Fund allocation is $19 million for FY '26. That is in the non-departmental budget to transfer over.
Right. FY '26, and this is, I don't know if you have this number, but I'd love to have it at some point. Do we have a rough sense of how much money is overall going to affordable housing support in the general fund, not others?
Yeah, we can, we can provide that.
I think that'd be very helpful. Again, sort of, you know, a bit of a view of not only direct, but also staff, et cetera.
The primary sources are Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and also you'll see a line for our bond commitments. Those are for the commitments to the Affordable Housing Homelessness Opportunity Bond, as well as the Housing Opportunity Bonds. There's three outstanding bonds that the general fund pays on behalf of Invest Atlanta for affordable housing work.
Yeah, so that plus, there's some dedicated headcount, I think, in...
There's some dedicated headcount.
Just a rough estimate of that?
Sure.
Sorry?
A table, just...
Yeah, that'd be super helpful. As well as, again, same kind of table on youth services.
Sure.
These are obviously memorial priorities. I think it'd be helpful to understand how much dollar, how many dollars are flowing that direction. Finally, on page 37. The FY '26 proposed budget capital outlays are back to FY '24 actuals. Can you just touch on that? I may have missed it as we were going through, but it is very low.
Page 37.
Purchase service contract.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead. You want to explain that?
Keep talking, and it'll come on.
No, great question. That was due to the reallocation. So what was in capital outlays previously, which was associated with the body worn cameras under the public safety contract that Axon, they just have been reclassified. So that's just a shift from capital outlays to the purchase contract services line.
Got it. Okay. Those are all the questions I had. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Hillis, followed by Ms. Backcherry.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, CFO Bala, your team, CFO Burks, for the presentation. A few questions. One of the items I really wanted some more information and timeline on that was, you touched on previously, are fee updates. You know, I led the effort the last term to finally update impact fees, which have not been updated since early '90s, and had engaged a DWM to update fees. They took a wrong approach to that during the last administration and stated they were going to revisit that with a right approach, as in hiring a consultant to do that required study. And from my understanding, have still not done that. So what is kind of the timeline for engaging these departments to perform these fee studies and get them updated for the first time in 15-plus years?
Yeah. So we're undertaking that effort now. We have coordinated with our wonderful financial advisors, PFM, that's going to look at a lot of the general fund service fees. And you'll see different pieces of legislation that will come before the body. We'll coordinate through the NPU process to get those up and moving. That will start happening. That's simultaneously happening now. So you'll start to see some of these within the next couple of cycles. The enterprise funds are undergoing their efforts as well. You saw Aviation did the parking fee. Watershed is looking at, and Solid Waste is also looking at, you know, bin delivery, bin pickup, express type of bin drop-off fees, and more concierge services that they perform over there to make sure, and commercial as well, to make sure that they can benefit from fees that other providers charge.
All right. We'll look forward to that. And you mentioned SWS and solid waste services. I imagine they are still taking from the general fund. So just an update as to what that running balance is, if you have it, and how much they're anticipating, for lack of a better term, stealing from the general fund this year to pay for solid waste services that users are supposed to pay for.
I would, I would be careful to call it stealing because we got sued on it.
I, as a user of solid waste services, I pay a fee in the city that is supposed to pay for that service in its totality. The general fund is not. So that's more where that term comes from.
Based on a litigation that the city received, it was intended that the general services area, the right-of-ways need to be maintained by the city and not the individual homeowners in those right-of-ways. So that includes illegal dumping. It includes a lot of things that a growing city is impacted by. And so there's a roughly 23, 20 million, 20, 23 million, thereabout, of general fund allocation to Department of Solid Waste Services to take care of those general areas. What we have to work with them closely on is really getting to the root cause of what causes trash to be dumped on people, on the right-of-way, that we have to end up cleaning, right? So more aggressive enforcement, more aggressive policies to hinder that type of behavior would drive down how much of that work we'll have to do in the future.
So just to be clear, when I'm talking about solid waste services and those fees, I guess you mentioned that prior litigation, you know, solid waste services fees are supposed to pay for the service that you're receiving as a homeowner or a business if the city collects your trash. I understand general wideway maintenance, that should be paid for from the general fund. So I guess my ask is how much of actual trash collection, not, you know, right-of-way maintenance, which should be the general fund, so how much actual trash collection is covered by the general fund?
None. So nothing from the trash collection side, but it, we'll have to kind of, we'll continue to work with the department just to make sure that those intended allocations are only utilized for that and not supplementing other needs of the department.
Understood. On, so looking at some of the other funds and the balances, one stood out, continues to stand out to me is impact fees. Especially that first bar with the Transportation Citywide Fund. That fund has not been paid into since 2021, when we adopted the new policy. So I would just like sometime, hopefully about the end of the week or first of next week, to get kind of a list of all of the projects, not only within that, but the other... the other restricted monies, a list of those projects that, that those, um, restricted funds belong to.
We, we can provide that. We can provide the encumbered schedule of all the projects that are listed restricted here for, um, you, all the impact fees for you.
Thank you. Um, you know, it's been said by, by multiple folks up here, um, the, the concerns with the increases when we were expecting to see decreases, um, I'll be, you know, when, when individual departments come up, I'll certainly be looking at the departments that are, um, over the total general fund increasing about 14 and a half or so percent. Uh, there are many that are well over that. Uh, one that sticks out most is procurement. I understand that, looking back, that's basically just catching them up to where they were two fiscal years ago. Um, but others that stand out are, uh, public safety. And I'll start by saying, as, as you and probably everyone on that table and up here behind these tables know, I'm one of, if not the top, public safety advocate on council, uh, having served either as chair or vice chair of the Public Safety Committee for every one of my eight years on council. Um, but it, it does seem to be somewhat getting a little bit out of control. Um, I'm, we'll start with corrections. Um, and again, I'm, I'm asking this to you because, and, and the COO, because I think this is a decision to be made well above that department's commissioner or chief, um, is that, you know, our city jail, we fill five, 10% of that jail with our city's inmates. Um, we also know that we have entered in an agreement with Fulton County for them to use up to 700 beds, which they've never even came close to using because of their own staffing issues yet. While we can't use any of those beds, because they're under that agreement, we only, we don't charge Fulton County for those 700 beds. We charge them per day for how many they're using.
Correct.
Um, so that, that seems to be a, a loss or, or an opportunity. So, um, what is the state, uh, of that contract? Um, the reason for these increases? Are we, you know, covering the county and doing their, their job for them? Now, what is, what's the jail going to look like, um, going through fiscal year 26?
And Councilmember Hillis, thank you, thank you for that. I think you hit the nail on the head with most of it, especially as it relates to Fulton County and them not taking full advantage or being able to use all the 700 beds that you all had approved, um, for them to use. And we're averaging right at about 3, 350-ish. You'll hear that from Chief Dancy, um, during his budget presentation. But I can tell you, so yes, so we're, the revenue is not coming in as we expected. I think our revenue chief kind of mentioned that for those reasons. But as it relates to our side of the House, and while we are not using, you know, a full part of the jail, how we are required to separate inmates and the staffing that you have to have for those is important for all of us to remember. So like 17-year-olds can't be with everybody else. So if you have one 17-year-old, you've got to put them in a pod and you have to have a staff in a pod. Same thing for mentally ill, same thing for men, same thing for women, and then based on the different charges. So while you may be overseeing fewer people, you still have to provide that same level of staffing. The other piece that you will see is around Grady Hospital. And so when an inmate has either taken ill from our city jail or is injured, shot, or whatever, through, you know, a police 911 call, we have to provide officers to sit on people at that jail. So in a weekend where we may have had five shootings, you've got to have 24 hours, one-on-one coverage as required by the state at Grady Hospital by our corrections division. So making sure as numbers fluctuate, as the types of people that come in fluctuate, and making sure that we are meeting all of our state guidelines, we're staffing at that particular level.
Thank you for that. And of course, there were increases in fire and, and police as well, but I'll, I'll probably save those questions for those chiefs, but we'll, we'll finish this question by just saying that, you know, I, when I came onto this council in 2018, you know, public safety was a, a real and a major concern, uh, for myself and a lot of people in Atlanta. And I will say that, uh, Mayor Dickens, yourself, um, chiefs have done an excellent job. Um, I'm no longer constantly worried about, um, state of our fleets. I know fire is, you know, it's going to take some while, it would take a while to build that one up due to the timeline for those trucks and engines to come in, but we're at an excellent, in an excellent space for public safety. Where I continue to have concern, um, and this is coming from pretty much ever, every resident that I, I hear from is transportation. Um, and, you know, last year, uh, the general fund was cut 10%. Uh, there is a 13% increase this year, but that's just a little bit more than catching them up where they were in fiscal year 24. Um, we have heard, had many conversations about capital projects. There was a capital projects audit that was done, moving Atlanta forward, renew Atlanta, T-Splus. Um, but it isn't just capital project issues, you know, although there are major issues which I think are slowly getting, uh, resolved and we're, we're getting on a better foot than where we were. It's day-to-day operations. Um, many of the SLAs are extremely low, not being met. I mean, and there are certain cases where I've had to ask for several potholes to be filled 10 times and it's taken six months and, um, street signs that I still don't have that have been requested for over two years. So, you know, I do appreciate this budget getting it a little further than it was just two fiscal years ago. What is kind of, uh, your view, either you, the COO or the CFO, um, as getting transportation back? Um, you know, the, the term right sizing was, was issued, or was used quite a bit, but I feel that transportation, to get it where it needs, needs to be, it, it truly needs to be right-sized, um, with a major budget increase, so.
So, so with Department of Transportation, of course, they, they have funding sources outside of just general fund. And so when we look at those collectively, we feel as if it is being right-sized, um, even with, I think they're at about a $6 million increase in FY26. Plus, you still have other funds and accounts that they can pull from in order for, to do their capital projects delivery. But we will continue to work on the day-to-day operations. I always appreciate the emails, um, when we have to do some check-ins around updates. And so I think you will begin to see some of the staffing levels. We've been looking at restructuring plans. I think you're going to start seeing some positions get filled that have been vacant for a while, and then you'll begin to see those day-to-day operations improve. But we definitely want to make sure we're filling potholes before 10 calls. We will definitely be looking into those things.
And, you know, I don't know if this is more for you or their CFO to speak on, um, and perhaps some, some, the commissioner when, when it is his turn, but where are we with finding more funding, you know, possibly outside of the general fund or increasing the general fund for what we like to classify as capital projects that are really required yearly maintenance? And what I'm specifically talking about is resurfacing. You know, resurfacing is what you have to do when you have a paved street. We have many roads in the city that have not been resurfaced in decades. Uh, so where, uh, are you, COO, you CFO, and potentially finding some more funding for needed, um, resurfacing, especially for arterials and collectors? I know we've passed a over $100 million bond that really concentrated on downtown and the surrounding areas for the World Cup, but us districts on, on the outskirts of the city, uh, need, need some love and some, some help too. So, uh, please.
Yeah, um, so we will, uh, continue to kind of look at, of, you know, some of the, um, efforts around additional revenue sources that could come in. Um, as those materialize, I, I do think that that's a, a good area to start the prioritization of which those new unlocked dollars could be utilized for. Uh, and resurfacing seems like a good candidate of recurring work that could be supported there. We'll continue to look, um, in other avenues, maybe some, some, some unspent or underutilized, uh, trust or impact dollars that could help with some of that work as well, too. We'll look at bond funds and we'll scrape the barrel to kind of see what, what other things might be available.
And Councilmember, I would, in addition to what, um, CFO Bala mentioned, and you're here a little bit more about this, we'll make sure that Commissioner Cavanagh and his team covers it. But of course, we receive state funding each year for resurfacing, and we have been notified by the state that we will receive additional, even more over what we received the last year without requiring a match again. Um, and then we, we've got to continue to move forward on some of our renew and move in Atlanta forward projects, which a lot of them are resurfacing in neighborhoods that we work with you councilmembers and the communities on with delivering those. And especially as we work through these IDIQs, um, we're starting to see things move a little bit faster, so. In addition to what CFO Bala mentioned, that also.
All right. Thank you both again, and, and your team, CFO.
All right, Ms. Bakteri, followed by Ms. Overstreet, and then we will be, uh, breaking for lunch. And we are already inside our, our lunchtime.
Really on my hay game. Um, first, thank y'all so much for being here. Um, whoever thought it was a good idea to make sure we were staring into our own faces while we were asking these questions, I appreciate you setting this up, but I also hate you for this. But no, thank you. I appreciate you being here. I just have a couple of questions because my colleagues have really knocked everything out, and I do think Councilmember Shook will destroy me if you don't get to lunch soon. So the first question I wanted to ask was, it's really just a couple of things I really want, I'm going to be hitting on. Um, I, my colleagues have already mentioned a lot of this, looking at kind of the budget, and this will be more departmental acts. I just want to flag that these are going to be things I'm looking into. Um, I mean, echoing Councilmember Hillis around corrections and wanting to have a better understanding there and the relationship with Fulton County, because I agree, it feels like we are repeatedly hearing the water for the county. Um, I think all of us in this room can agree on that, and this feels like another way that could be happening and maybe an opportunity to revisit and find out how we can make this, um, more sustainable for the city. The other piece is, I'm, I'm going to be looking heavily at DCP and city, and ATL DOT with everything we're giving them, especially DCP. I mean, finishing up the CDP zoning 2.0, um, looking at everything going into next year and the amazing, I think, like affordable housing goals we have set and looking at the fact that we're going to be building at such a deficit, which we already are, but knowing what's coming with this, this current federal climate. Um, and I, I think one of my biggest concerns, and this is not unique to our city, is just continued burnout leading to additional outsourcing, leading to higher costs for taking care of things. And I know that we are down designers and a couple of other things with an ADLT and city planning, um, which really brings me to one question I'll ask that actually applies here. Um, it would just be, uh, House Bill 461. Uh, I know that we still need money for DCP because that House Bill doesn't put it towards all staffing, only certain parts. But given that that bill, I mean, that bill could assist us with funds collected from permits being used for permit activities. Is there a way for us to look into that with supplementing their income to ensure that we are maintaining retention as we go into such uncertain times? Well, we're already in uncertain times, but as things become increasingly uncertain.
I will say, Councilmember, thank you for that question. That is one we are continuing to look at. Our legislative team is still digesting it.
Yes.
Um, and going through it, sometimes there are just a lot of fine print that we need to dig into, but our legislative affairs team is working hard to look into that. And as we know more about what we can and cannot do with funding from that, we will make some adjustments.
Thank you, because I, looking at where we're going, I think 36 to 26 this year, correct? Um, and I know we'll find ways as the year goes on to supplement that, but if there was a way to better understand this, that would be greatly appreciated. Um, and, and I already told you, the pieces, COO, thank you for making notes, the pieces I'll be asking about and digging into. I also want to thank you for being here. Um, you're always here no matter what's going on, so I appreciate you. Thank you. And that concludes for me. I know, shocker, but please continue, Councilmember.
Thank you, Ms. Overstreet.
Well, actually, um, I've heard quite a few things to let me know exactly which direction we're going in. First, I want to thank you all for, um, all being here, the entire financial team. Um, I'm very proud of the work that you all do. I tell you all the time, especially in finance committee, and I really mean that. And you, you get to really shine in May for budget hearings. Um, and, um, I like to start off the beginning of the budget hearings, letting everybody know that, um, we appreciate you. No matter what we say during this month, we do, we really do appreciate you. I think that it takes all of this in order for us to, um, have the, the robust conversations that we have to have so that we can deliver to our communities like we're supposed to and like we always end up doing. So that's where we are. At the beginning of our comments, um, question and answer, we, uh, heard from Juan, and he talked about, um, how we had an opportunity to, you know, really put out a more conservative stance on our budget. And I, I would like to say have, because to me, this budget hearing time is, uh, is, is really a time for us to fine-tune what you all have started. Um, and this is certainly not where we're going to land. We never do. We always, um, you know, tweak it the best that we, uh, can throughout the process. Um, so this, to me, is, um, an outline, and it shows, you know, a really good direction that we need to go in so that we can stay sound, physically sound. Um, but I do think that this month is an opportunity because I think you hear from the councilmembers that we absolutely have a, um, an appetite to be more conservative this year because of what we are, was looming and what we're approaching. Um, I think that we should be a little more conservative, conservative than what I actually thumbed through the book, um, last night. That was so much fun. But, um, on Cinco, that all went well together. But anyway, um, I, I just think that we have an opportunity here, and you heard it really from all of us, um, in a different way from each. Um, but we, as a city, um, I think that we are a little bloated, if I'm being completely honest. So right now is not the time for that. In the political landscape, the national economic landscape, and the uncertainty, um, I just really think that you all have to, um, trust in what you're really thinking and feeling. Um, do your best in guiding the powers that be and anyone that speaks to you, um, in a more conservative direction for the city at this time, for sure. And you have, we, we, we support you in that. And I, I, I'm hoping that you heard that from us today more than anything else. Um, I, uh, I know it's lunchtime, but I do have a couple of questions. Um, I looked at page 30, and on page 30, there was this pie chart, and as you were speaking, I was just wondering quickly, um, what is the other on that pie chart in the, um, the tax by land use? What is the other? Because it's actually larger than industrial. Can you give me a couple of examples of what that other is?
This is basically your historical properties.
Okay.
As well as mobile homes, um, mobile vehicles, and then your public utility taxes.
Okay, got it.
Which consists of others.
Okay, thanks. I was just wondering that, um, because I was wondering, what is larger than industrial, smaller than commercial? You know, I was really trying to figure it out. So thanks for that. Um, anyway, um, as we, so just an example of, of what I mean by, uh, how, how we could be a little more conservative. As we approach the summer session, I'm hearing that we're not going to open all of our pools at the same time. Like, is, is, is that true or not? At, like we usually do? Like, like Memorial Day usually kicks off our, our pools?
Councilmember, that is, that was a part of an original proposal as we were working on cuts.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the department has been informed that that is not an option. So as we look to, at, for our pool season, the only reason a pool should not open on time is if there's an issue with the inspection and the. is if there's an issue with the inspection and the certification from Fulton County not related to a budget.
Thank you, and I'm glad to hear that. My point here is there are certain things that the city of Atlanta is known for and that we have to deliver, and we shouldn't compromise. Absolutely. What we're doing, forward-facing for our citizens that need us the most, because of some other things that we could probably cut or not do as much of. Pools need to be open. Trash need to be picked up on time. And I just think that at the end of the day, our city services are paramount, and I want our budget to really reflect that. I will also agree that we have plenty of opportunities to allow other entities to do what they're supposed to do. Fulton County, the state, our budget just will not. And I think we're reaching that point of understanding, it will not allow for us to continue to carry the weight of those, our partners around us. And that's fine. I mean, we can work with them to make sure that they are at the table the way they're supposed to be. They most certainly don't hesitate to let us know when we need to be at the table. So we can help them do better as well, and I'm here for that. I'm sure council will support you on that, support you on that also. So just closing up, just know that, looking at the, well, I do have one more question. What do you think is a good number of employees for the city of Atlanta? That's overarching, but I just, you know, as we get started talking to all of the different departments, I'd like to know that firsthand.
Yeah. It's a good question. There are standard kind of metrics of what an employee per resident should be for the city of Atlanta. And if you look at that metric compared to other cities, that would probably put us at about 5,000 or so total general fund employees.
Ooh.
General fund.
General fund, not total.
Okay.
This is general fund.
Nowhere near that.
Total employees is about probably 8,500 or so in that range.
Okay, and where are we right now, especially since we did our new mandate?
The last update that was given by HR had us over.
A little over.
A little over 9,000. So.
So we're still, you know, 500?
We did see some drop-offs.
We did see some drop-off and return to work.
It's a continuous process.
Yes.
I would segment out and focus on our general fund target more so than the enterprise ones, because their operations are funded by their ratepayers and activities, business activities that they do. So we'll continue to monitor and look closely into that. And, you know, there's some specific areas like police and fire and service delivery that have to be met at a specific level, and we'll look at where we can find areas to be more efficient.
Okay. And, you know, understanding that the council, ooh, y'all really. Understanding that we're not a buzzsaw type of community, right? We don't mind doing the work necessary to get our employees, the numbers exactly where they need to be, and it doesn't have to be overnight. But I guess we're all done here, huh? Thanks again so much for all that you do.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We are in recess until 1:00.